Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council. I'd like to call it to order, and this is for February 8th, 2018. And to start it off, Mr. Fox, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and eternal.
Ms. Van, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Daniels. Councilmember Fox.
Present.
Councilmember Slowey.
Present.
Vice Mayor Bruins.
Present.
And Mayor Miller.
Present.
Tonight's meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. This meeting is closed caption and webcast at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replays on Monday, February 12th at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14, and a DVD is available for checkout from any library branch. Next item is approval of agenda, and I would just like to note that staff has requested to remove item 13 or pull it off of the agenda for action tonight, so there will be no action tonight on item 13.
So I'll move approval of the agenda less item 13.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Stain passes unanimously.
Next item is presentations, and there are none. Next is comments by councilmembers and regional board updates.
Okay. Let's start with Mr. Slowey tonight.
Happy to. So on the 29th, the mayor and I actually had a small intimate dinner at a local establishment with the incoming Senate pro tem, Tony Akins. Interesting to get a chance to talk to her, so I'm glad we did that. February 2nd, SaCog Transportation Committee met. Nothing major out of it. I know Mary Poole and others are working on a potential grant there, so keep that moving. Last Saturday, I know I saw Brett there. I don't know if anybody else went, but we attended the fundraiser for the CHPD and the Folsom PD for the annual Baker to Vegas Run. Sounds like they did pretty good that day. Monday, went to the REACH meeting. Nothing, nothing really to report, except that there is a potluck that REACH is having on March 5th. I don't know what day of the week March 5th is, but it's 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. There's a program. Should be pretty good from Michael Marcus and Thomas, our very own Thomas Spencer, will be giving a presentation. Last thing, two things, sorry. On Monday, and Steve, if you want to talk more about this, fine, but there is a press conference here at City Hall, 10 o'clock. RT Smart Ride On Demand, that's a pilot program being kicked off here, so look forward to that. And then the last thing I'll just mention now, I spoke to the chief outside of the meeting, and I know that they're thinking of bringing something forward to us, but the California Police Chiefs Association is actually supporting a potential ballot initiative called Reducing Crime and Keeping California Safe Act of 2018. A lot of it was what they tried to pass in the Assembly last year, but couldn't get consensus, so they're taking it to the folks. But I just hope you folks will consider it. It's got some fixes in it for things that, in my opinion, are not good out there, so just keep an open mind for when that comes. I was originally going to ask us to write a letter, but seeing as they're going to bring a resolution forward, I'll let it go that way. That's it from my end.
Thank you. Brett, what you been up to?
Nothing.
Loaded question.
That's it?
Oh, that's good. Those are the best presentations. All right. Mr. Fox?
He covered it all.
The mayor and I attended the Metro Chamber Dinner on the Friday, the 26th of January. They were at their invitation. We, it was a good evening to see the business side of our region and what they're trying to do and the way they're trying to grow and how they consider looking at us in terms of our community. And one of the comments that I heard several times that evening was something that is following along a program that we're looking at here for Citrus Heights. It has to do with how we've, we're rooted in our history and in our community, but how well we have done and how well we're trying to grow. And it seems to be a comment of several of those folks that I met that evening. On Thursday, February 1st, I was fortunate enough to be in town and participate in the Police Department's SOUPER. It's S-O-U-P-E-R Bowl. There are soup luncheon things at the PD. What a great turnout and a good bunch of folks. Thank you for the invitation, Chief, and your staff. It was a good day. On February 2nd, I met with Barry Broom. He is the CEO of Greater Sacramento Economic Commission and Council, and very dynamic guy. Councilman Slowey and I had attended a meeting at their organization in which we were presented with a lot of things at the local business. Business folks are active in it. I wanted to get from him a regional perspective of how they were seeing Citrus Heights in our area and where we were going. And so I had lunch with him and one of his staffers. It was interesting to hear them talk about what they hope to see from in Citrus Heights and in our area and things that they believe that we can participate in and kind of their vision. And we're talking by them, we're talking about some of the major corporations and CEOs of corporations who really have the Sacramento region as a whole at heart, and they include us in that thought process. And so it was a learning experience for me, and I really appreciated their time. Today, we had the Sacramento Transportation Authority Board meeting. It was all about budgets, bringing things back up to speed. We had raised several questions in the last couple of meetings about the prior administration and some budget issues and trying to get the budget into focus as to what was going on, where the monies were, those types of things, because the records just were not showing what all had been going on with them. And today, they brought that all to a conclusion for us with all the information, including setting out what their hopes are for Sacramento Transportation Authority, the incomes and the possibilities of getting monies for transportation issues of which we will be part of in this coming year. And so it turned out to be a very good meeting. And then the last thing, I've been looking at some of the different companies in town stopping by, talking to them, just introduced myself as being new to the council and new to their area. I went over to a 10th Inning Tavern. It's a small business on Mariposa Street across from Hall's Furniture. It's a family-owned business. They do lunches and sandwiches, and they had a good opportunity to talk to the owner and his wife. If those of you that went to the foodie event at Rush Park where we had the different food vendors that attended, he and his wife were there. They do the pulled pork sliders with coleslaw, and they set up that particular venue. They loved it. They had a great time. If it's done again, they will be back, but they are, they had a lot of good things to say about doing business in Citrus Heights and what they hope to do to grow their small business, either at that location or possibly over on Auburn Boulevard as it continues to grow and change. And that, that's pretty much it.
Thank you. Thank you, Al Genie.
Thank you. Well, none of my boards met since our last council meeting, so I don't have anything to report in that area. I just do want to remind you that this weekend, we've got the Fill the Boot event that comes to Citrus Heights every year from the fire department, and our firefighters will be out in force at the intersections, so be generous. I think we are the number-one location in fundraising for them, and if I remember correctly, last year, we, our community and those driving through our community brought in about $120,000 in that weekend for burn victims, for their nonprofit that services burn victims. So that's kicking off tomorrow morning at 8:30, and it's going on throughout the weekend, so be careful. Make sure you don't hit a firefighter and give. Thank you.
Thank you. And let's see, for me, it's a nice thing about going last. I check a lot off the list, but I still had, a week ago Wednesday, I did meet one-on-one with Henry Lee from Regional Transit. He's the general manager. And we meet every other month just to talk about items specific to Citrus Heights. And Jeff had mentioned the press conference coming up Monday at 10 for the on-demand transit that we're going to be piloting in Citrus Heights, and that came out of these meetings and talking about what we thought might work here for suburbia and transit. Tuesday, I went with Devin Rodriguez, the chief of police and our city manager, to Costco to check in and see how one of our major businesses, especially when it comes to generating sales tax revenue, is doing, and business is booming. In fact, one of the comments I found interesting is that they seem to be doing better after Roseville opened their Costco, and I don't know if it's because ours is more convenient, better store, cleaner. I like to think that. So that was a good meeting, and we're going out again Friday to talk with one of the major contractors that's headquartered here in our city. Wednesday, I went on a tour with the city managers and a few others of the medical office building model that they built down in Elk Grove for Dignity Health, and they've got a mock-up of what they're going to be doing here in Citrus Heights, and it's kind of new to medicine. And one of the things that I think is nice is you'll enter the exam rooms in this medical office buildings from the hallway that's on the outside, and the doctors and nurses will be on the interior, and they have an interior access to the exam rooms as far as, and the patients from the outside. And it kind of puts everybody together and hopefully a better customer experience for the patients that go to this medical office building. So very interesting, and again, this is something groundbreaking coming to Citrus Heights, so very excited about that. And I think that's it. So on to the next item.
The next item is public comment, and members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public and within the council's purview, or on any agenda item before or during the council's consideration of the item. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, fill out a speaker identification sheet and give it to myself, the city clerk. When you're called upon to speak, step forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Normally, speakers are limited to five minutes each, with 30 minutes being allowed for all comments, and any public comments beyond the initial 30 minutes may be heard at the conclusion of the agenda. And the mayor has the discretion to lengthen or shorten the allotted times.
Thanks, Amy. I just have requests to speak on item 12, so I'm going to hold those for item 12. Do we have anything for public comment? Yeah?
Another one for item 12.
Oh, it's another one for item 12. So unless anyone wants to speak under public comment, I'm going to hold those for item 12. And so that concludes public comment.
So the next item is consent calendar items four through 10.
I'll move consent.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? Consent calendar passes unanimously.
The next item, public hearing, item number 11. The subject is adoption of mitigated negative declaration and adoption of the neighborhood's eight, nine, and 10 storm drainage master plan study. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution adopting the Citrus Heights Neighborhood's eight, nine, and 10 storm drainage master plan study and adopting a mitigated negative declaration.
Okay. Before we start this item or hear this item, as I was reading it, I realized that it contemplated doing work about five feet from my house in the back and about 30 foot in the front, so I'm going to recuse myself on this item, and I believe Brett, you have the same issue?
I'm a little more than five feet away, but just a potential conflict, so I will.
Okay. Genie, I'll give you the gavel, and we'll be in a soundproof room until this is over.
For those of you who may not be aware, if any of us live within 500 feet of a project, we have an inherent conflict of interest if it could potentially have an impact on the value of our property. So that's why they've recused themselves and have left the room, and we will carry on without them. So, Madam Clerk, would you please read the item? Oh, you did read it, didn't you? Sorry. Okay. So this is a public hearing. Do we have a staff report before we go to the public hearing? Okay.
Vice Mayor and remaining members of council. I am Stu Hodgkins with the General Services Department. The item before you tonight for your consideration is the adoption of a resolution adopting the Neighborhood's eight, nine, and 10 storm drainage master plan study and an associated mitigated negative declaration, which is an environmental document that goes along with that. Just very briefly, we took over, we, the city, took over drainage maintenance in 2010, and very quickly after that, committed to coming up with a comprehensive program of addressing, reducing flooding and addressing some other drainage issues in neighborhoods in our community. And as part of that, we created, beginning or back in 2012, we completed our first neighborhood drainage study for areas six and seven, and immediately retained West Yost that same year to convene a study in the Neighborhood's eight, nine, and 10 areas. That study was in turn completed in about two years ago, in February of 2016, and shortly after that, our consultant doc in engineering was hired to prepare a mitigated negative declaration in compliance with SEQA to ensure that we're taking on these projects as part of the master plan appropriately. There are basically, as part of the master plan, 12 distinct projects to be constructed over approximately a four-year period. You may recall that about a year ago, three contracts were executed with design firms to begin the design process for the projects considered as part of this particular master plan. At this point, I would ask that you convene a public hearing to consider any public comment on the matter, and then at your pleasure, close the hearing and consider adoption of the resolution.
Okay. Thank you, Stu. All right. With that having been said, I will open the public hearing at this time. Is there anybody from the public who would like to come forward and make comment? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask council if they have any comments or if they're ready to forward a motion.
I just have one question. On problem location number 12, it talks about pipe improvements between a couple of streets, and then it says an overland release structure near Saginaw Way. What is an overland release structure?
In numerous locations around the city, we design our drainage systems to handle a certain level of flood control. You've heard the reference before, 10-year, 20-year type storms. We still desire, assuming that once in a while you'll have a storm that exceeds that, that will overflow that system, you want to make sure that there's a logical overflow, overland flow that doesn't pass through somebody's home or damage other properties and things of that nature. So that is the goal with those types of improvements.
So it's just an alternate of where the water would flow if it doesn't?
Yes. To carry excess flow.
Okay. I just hadn't heard it referred to as that before. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No.
Okay. Then if there's nothing further, I will entertain a motion.
Move approval.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded to approve the, the subject at hand here, the mitigated negative declaration and adoption of these projects. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. It carries.
Thank you.
Okay. So we're going to bring the other two in before we go on to the next subject. Did they? Okay, they heard us. Would somebody please? Oh, thank you. I'd like to bring the other two members in before we go to the next item.
How'd it go?
Easy cake.
Are we on to the next item?
Yep.
So the next item is public hearing, number 12. The subject is appeal of Planning Commission decision regarding gates at 5555 Mariposa, the North Ridge Grove subdivision. And staff on behalf of the Planning Commission recommends that city council deny the appeal and uphold the Planning Commission's decision to approve the gates and make the following motions, find that the previously adopted mitigated negative declaration for the project is appropriate, in that no substantial changes have occurred or no new information requiring additional environmental review has been presented, and to deny the appeal and approve a design review permit modification allowing privacy gates at 5555 Mariposa, subject to the findings and conditions of approval.
Okay. Thank you, Amy. And before we get started, I just wanted to let you know the ground rules. We're going to hear from staff on this, and then any council questions. Then I'll open the public hearing, and I'll give the appellant seven minutes to speak and the project applicant, and that's a maximum. You don't have to take the full seven minutes. And then we have a number of folks that'd like to speak on it. I'd like to limit their comments to five minutes max, and then I'll close. Oh, and if, if the appellant or the applicant would like to close or make a rebuttal, I'll grant three minutes at the end, maximum for that, and then council will deliberate and we'll vote. Colleen, it's all yours.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and members of the council. I'm Colleen McDuffie with the Planning Division. So I just give you a very brief little background of the project. The slide here shows its location along Mariposa, north of Madison, kind of right between Skycrest Elementary School and San Juan Park. Here's a layout of what the subdivision looks like. It's 46 single-family homes. The project itself was actually approved back in 2007. As you can see, it's a cluster development with one point of access from Mariposa Avenue. Most of the infrastructure out there and for the project is already complete. Really, the only thing left to do is to build the homes, and that is scheduled to occur this year. So as mentioned, the request before you tonight is a request from the developer of the subdivision to be allowed to install gates across the frontage of the project along Mariposa, and this is a sketch of what those gates would look like. Much of the discussion, when this went to the Planning Commission, had to do with general plan consistency. The general plan, as you know, has many, many goals, and each of those goals has a number of policies and action items that tends to guide the city to meet those overarching goals. Goal four, which I show here, is to ensure that new development is compatible within its neighborhood. And one of the policies in the general plan in support of that goal is general plan policy 4.3, which says discourage features in residential development that tend to isolate residents from the sense of an integrated community, such as walls and gated, single-family neighborhoods. So really, I think the heart of the item before you tonight is this general plan policy. Back in December, the Planning Commission considered this request. There were three people who spoke at the meeting, the applicant, a resident who was in support of the gates, and Bill Van Duker, who, as you know, later filed an appeal. In addition, there was a petition signed by about five nearby residents in support of the project. And then more recently, you, in the packet, you saw that the Birdcage Heights Neighborhood Association Board submitted a letter of support. This slide here summarizes the comments or some of the comments Planning Commissioners made during their deliberations in December. For those commissioners who were opposed to allowing the subdivision to be gated, one of the main reasons was policy 4.3, and some of them just felt that there really wasn't any wiggle room or leeway in the interpretation of that policy. Commissioners also expressed concern that residents who live in gated communities kind of retreat behind those gates and don't become as actively involved in the community as they otherwise might. There was also concern expressed about if there's any malfunction with the gates in the time of a medical emergency, that that could have obviously severe consequences for the resident, because every second counts. And another concern that was mentioned was that this could set a precedent, and that there was a concern that other projects in the future may request to be gated, or perhaps even existing developments may come back to the city and ask for permission to install gates. Some of the comments from Planning Commissioners supporting allowing the gate, one of the main ones had to do with safety and crime prevention and the thought that having gates would be a deterrent to crime in the area, or at least for that subdivision. And some of the commissioners stated that they did not believe that if you lived in a gated subdivision, that it made you any less likely to participate in your neighborhood, and that in some ways, those residents living within that neighborhood will have a strong sense of community on their own, but that it wouldn't necessarily stop them from reaching out to the rest of the community. And then finally, there was a comment about just, you know, making it a little bit more easier for development to proceed as they would like. It was also noted during the Planning Commission meeting that there were some unique features of this project that would distinguish it from a typical, single-family subdivision neighborhood. One of those is its layout. As I showed you that slide earlier, it's not like a typical lotting pattern with streets and every house having its own garage fronting a street. It's a private street layout. Many of the homes will actually have their garages off of a shared courtyard, and the lots themselves are very small, in the 3,000 to 5,000 square foot range, reflecting really this cluster development that was, you know, originally designed this way because they were trying to preserve some of the trees and the creek channel on the site. It was also discussed that while the proposal, you know, is to gate it, that the developer did do some off-site improvements in the neighborhood that could help improve community interaction, and that had to do with sidewalk installation. Not only did the developer install the sidewalks along the project frontage, but there previously had been gaps between the school and the park that were a little bit off-site, and they filled those sidewalk gaps in. So really, the project is improving walkability in the area, both for residents in the subdivision but the overall community, and that could lead to, you know, more opportunities for community interaction. So after quite a bit of discussion, the Planning Commission did approve the request for the gates on a 4-3 vote. Following that, we did receive an appeal from Bill Van Duker, and you have a copy of that appeal in your packet in this slide here. I tried to summarize the main points of that appeal letter. I think the first one, again, was, as I mentioned, was a major point of discussion, was that it violated policy 4.3. The second point Mr. Van Duker makes is that the findings that were in the Planning Commission staff report and that the Planning Commission adopted did not make a direct reference to the general plan. That's correct, and we have modified that for the findings that you can consider tonight to reference the general plan, and we've based those findings on the comments and testimony that the Planning Commission made during the public hearing. Another point of the appeal was the concern that by approving the gates, there would be no basis for denying future gated communities. And in response to that, I just note that the Planning Commission's vote for this 5555 Mariposa project was really just for that project only, in that each project in the future, were there other requests, would be evaluated individually and on its own merits. And the Planning Commission will not be bound to vote any particular way based on their past decision. And finally, another point in Mr. Van Duker's letter was he made note that the developer, Mr. Casonelli, had during his time addressing the Planning Commission relayed to the commission some conversations he had, he had had with both the school district and a member of the police department, and he noted that that, that those comments were not provided with any documentation to the Planning Commission. So I did afterwards contact our police department representative, and I confirmed that, you know, they had had that conversation. And then this afternoon, we received a packet of information as well. I don't know if you've had a chance to see it, but there is some information that the applicant has provided confirming the conversations with the school district. So finally, on behalf of the Planning Commission, we've put together motions here for you to deny the appeal and allow the gates at 5555. gates at 5555 Mariposa. And I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions, Colleen? Okay, thank you. With no questions, we'll move to the, I'll open the public hearing. And I'll call the appellant, Bill Van Duker, to the podium. There's Bill. And Amy, set the shot clock at seven minutes.
Hi, Bill.
Good evening. Hi, Steve. Mayor Miller and members of the council and staff, and thank you, Colleen, for a very balanced summary of the issues. Taking the step of appealing a planning decision was not lightly taken. With eight years on the Citrus Heights Planning Commission, I have the highest regard for the quality of work that comes out of the Planning Department. And I did not appeal the decision because I think that the Northridge Grove project is a bad one. The project appears to have resolved a long controversy that was known for years as the 555 Mariposa problem. My current concern is not with the project, but it's with the privacy gates. Goal two of the general plan, which Colleen didn't mention, states to preserve the unique character of Citrus Heights, and my emphasis, create a distinctive community identity. Goal 2.2 says, preserve the city's small-town attributes, and again, my emphasis, sense of community. I'd like to address some of the statements made by the Planning Commission and in the staff report. One, and I quote, gated communities do foster a sense of community within themselves. Well, that's true, but that doesn't apply to this, to this issue before us. Again, I quote, "The city required the project to include features that will help residents integrate with the community." I couldn't find these features. I suspect that the required pedestrian gate to the park is probably a one-way gate where you have to have a key to get through it. Regarding my concern that this project may be precedent-setting, the staff says, and it's true, each project is unique and is evaluated as such. This is true, but a bit disingenuous. Anyone in politics or who is a parent knows that today's exception becomes tomorrow's precedent. If you deny the appeal, any future applicant who says that gates have appropriate design, are an attractive feature, don't hurt the landscape, will have a strong case for approval. And I'm quoting some of the findings. Crime is an issue, this is quoting again, crime is an issue when things have changed since the policy was placed in the general plan 20 years ago. That statement's true, but it's incomplete. First, the policy may have been placed in the general plan 20 years ago, but it's still a policy. If the community feels this provision is no longer applicable, then change the provision. Second, crime is less of a problem in Citrus Heights now than it was then. With our own police department, most major crime statistics have been trending downward. And the applicant has submitted some crime statistics about Citrus Heights, and I think that it's fair to say that when you have a good police department, more crimes are reported. If you're in the county, you don't bother to report it because you know there will be no action. Third, we didn't have community associations when this provision was adopted. We do now, and by most measures, they have helped the city comply with Goal 2 and Goal 2.2 that I mentioned earlier. And I'm quoting here, "While the written findings adopted by the Planning Commission did not specifically relate to the general plan, their testimony did relate to the general plan." That's where this proposal is flawed. If one is departing from the provisions of the general plan, the findings must be the basis for that departure. The staff report explicitly states that the findings did not specifically relate to the general plan. Since the general plan does not spell out when exceptions are allowed, the evidence must be overwhelming to set aside the general plan provisions. These findings in the report do not rise to that level. The general plan does not say discourage gated, single-family neighborhoods, except when the development is next to a school, or next to a park, or is in the case of the Wyatt subdivision on Lawrence Drive and Sunrise, next to Cianar Drive. The general plan discourages them, period. The findings are so weak, in my view, as to be almost pointless. One, the project complies with the zoning code. Well, that's normal. The gates have appropriate design, massing, and scale. What's that got to do with the general plan? This would be a requirement for gates wherever they're used, whether it's at a senior facility, or a multi-unit apartment, or whatever, but it's not the basis for violating the general plan. Proposed gates provide an attractive and desirable feature. Well, I don't want to be sarcastic, but so what, in terms of the general plan? Proposed gates provide safe and efficient access for emergency services. I don't think that there's a fire chief in the region who would state that they prefer, that they prefer gates versus no gates when they respond to emergencies. And one that made me chuckle basically says the proposed gates won't hurt the landscape. The modified conditions offered after the Planning Commission hearing states, "The project is consistent with the general plan." The more correct statement should be, "The project is not consistent with the general plan, but the findings offered here are a compelling basis for an exception," and I don't find them compelling. That condition goes on to say, "The site is unique," and well, every site's unique, and has provided improvements will encourage this development to integrate both within itself, which is probably true, and with the outward community, even with the installation of gates. I believe that last statement is without foundation, either in any of the documentation, or in actual experience with other gated communities. This project will be marvelous, will be a marvelous addition to our community, and I look forward to its development. But we don't need private gated communities in Citrus Heights. I ask you to sustain my appeal and deny the application to create a gated community in Citrus Heights. Eleven seconds left.
Bill, before you leave.
Hold on a second. Question?
Before you made your concluding remarks, you had one final point, and I didn't quite catch it. Could you just repeat that? You said, before you went into your concluding remarks?
It has to do with, I believe, is that, was it, the modified condition offered by the Planning Commission hearing states that the project is consistent with the general plan, and I-
But following that, you had another one, I think?
The site is unique, and I said that every site's unique.
Right, but after that?
And, well, I went on to say that with the outward community, even with the installed gates, there will be some isolation.
Okay. Maybe I caught it all. It just seemed like there was something else, I guess. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Bill. This time, I'd like to call the project applicant, Steve Casonelli, to the-
I'm still working on my seven minutes to get it down.
Oh, you're editing down?
I beg forgiveness here.
Oh, I can go ahead and call someone from the public. Oh, sure, sure. Good idea, Jeff. Okay, reset the clock to five, and Larry Wright, followed by Marley Savory. You'll be after Larry.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm a longtime resident of Citrus Heights. I've been here 47 years, in the same location, same house, over off of Highview Lane in Greenland, within the 1,000-square-foot radius of this project. I followed it since the old project was denied, came when the new project became plausible. Not knowing any of the reasons why this gate became such a big problem, other than the ambiguity of 4.3. I have also a place in Palm Springs, that's 55 units, in a gated community. There are gated communities of condominium associations, there are gated communities of homes, and it doesn't seem to be a problem there. I've never had a problem with anybody coming in that wasn't welcome. The police can get in, the fire can get in, rescue squads can get in, and the gates work. They also have facilities, if in fact the electricity fails, they have a generator that will keep the gate running. My one thing is, is that the people around the area that live within that 1,000-square-foot radius don't see a problem with it. Unfortunately, Mr. Van Duker, who doesn't live within the 1,000-square-foot area, lives three miles away or more, as I've been told, decided that he felt it necessary under 4.3. 4.3 also says, "No walls." Unfortunately, the Planning Commission required Mr. Casonelli to spend an exorbitant amount of money to build walls around the complex, along with to the park you could see through, and it's not walls, it's wrought iron. So the area is confined, to begin with. The ambiguity of 4.3, saying that you can't have a gate, but you got to have walls, or the Planning Commission's saying you got to have walls, that needs to be updated or changed. I don't see a problem with participation by the community or anybody else because of the gates. The gates are going to give you security. There's two bridges. If we have people that go in, fall over the rail, transients, homeless, hurt themselves, the city becomes liable if it doesn't have a way to keep them safe. Therefore, I think we should grant this, and we should look at down the road, other projects that may require gated communities. And I think that you need to look into 4.3 and possibly make some changes, so that it's not as ambiguous as it is. You can't have the Planning Commission saying you got to do one thing, and 4.3 saying another. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Marley Savory, and you, followed by Jack Frost.
Good evening, Mayor Miller and council. I'm Marley Savory, and I'm speaking on behalf of the residents of Area, Neighborhood Area 11. I've yet to find one of my neighbors who agrees with Mr. Van Duker. But I want to first compliment him, because I do respect his obvious mastery of the Planning Commission history and the rules that have been put into place. And as a conservative, I respect having rules and history, and adhering to that which has proven to be a good history and good rules. I also feel there is a time when you listen to new voices and change is called for. The people of my neighborhood, I live just two doors down from Kingswood School on Bloom Way. The people who are here tonight on behalf of Area 11, all agree, this, this thing that Steve Casonelli is building, this project, is beautiful. I have toured it twice. If you have yet to tour it, I urge you to tour it. As to encouraging our neighbors to be a part of the greater neighborhood, his wrought iron fencing on the side of the park and the side of the school, which he didn't have to do, he did it anyway, and it's a great improvement. You walk into this area that's going to be the housing development, it's all open, green, big oak trees. You have a feeling of the development itself being an extension of Parkway, because you have the school field on one side and the park on the other. It's beautiful. It's going to enhance our Citrus Heights neighborhood. If I were a little younger, I might consider buying there. It's going to be lovely. But I kind of like the fact that I'm hanging on to Prop 13, and my house is paid for, our house. But I'd love to live there. And if I did invest there, you bet I'd want that security gate. Now, I don't mind telling you, because I usually get people saying, "Oh, you don't look it." I'm 80.
Oh, you don't look it?
What? I am 80. Shouldn't I be concerned about emergency access? Of course. But I listen more to the security that those gates could provide. When was the last time you visited San Juan Park? I go over there a couple times a week on our walks, a mile and a half a day. There's frequently, if not usually, homeless people in there. I walked in there a week ago, and there was a young mother, I think she was 30, 30ish, with a three-year-old. And she didn't know why I was there, or what my interests were. She just came over to say, "My little girl needs to use the bathroom, but I'm scared to go over there and take her." Well, I wouldn't have either. There were two homeless guys with their carts and stuff behind the restrooms. Now, it's a huge, huge thing, what to do about the homeless, and how to do it in a loving way and all that. That's a different topic. But if I were buying at 5555 Mariposa, you bet I'd want those gates to lock. And I'm going to ask anyone who is from Area 11, I now serve as president, so I get to do stuff like this, to stand up if you agree with me. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack Frost, followed by Lynn Gandy, Andy, I believe, but you can correct me when you come forward. Hi, Jack.
Hi, Steve. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Jack Frost. I live about a quarter of a mile from, from this project, at 5555 Mariposa Avenue. And I'm here to support the project as a gated community. The developer, Steve Casonelli, has done an amazing job with this project. Again, I encourage you, if you haven't been there, this, this is going to be a project we can really be proud of. He spent over $600,000 on the walls. They basically enclosed about 98% of this project. So this project is already 98% enclosed, except for the area where the gates need to be. He spent $50,000 out of his, out of his pocket to replace a partial fence that's on the school boundary that was basically falling down. He spent over $600,000 on two bridges to protect the creek that runs through the property. Creek that, right now, doesn't have any water, but of course, someday, we're hoping there's going to be quite a bit of water going through there. He removed existing overhead wires and put them underground, put a new water system, a new sewer system in the project. He added 126 new trees, beautiful landscaping. The project is totally self-contained, so the city's not going to have any maintenance issues. The streets are private. In fact, I'm pretty sure that if somebody did get hurt on those bridges, because it's private property, the, there probably wouldn't be any liability for the city for that as well. But there is one area that could cost the city some money, because this property is right on the border of San Juan, where Marley's already accurately stated is a pretty popular area for homeless campers and vagrants. And this project has had a lot of capital, a lot of investment capital has gone in to this project. So the home prices are going to be reflecting that capital that's gone into this project. And this project was approved as a gated community. Doesn't really seem fair to have a developer have an approved project as a gated community, put this kind of money into it, and then not be able to have the security that these gates are going to provide. The homeless have already vandalized this property on many, many occasions. They've, there's graffiti there, they've been camping on the property. And, and one cost the city might have is if you don't allow the gates, the homeless people are going to be a potential problem there. Then you're going to have the city police department going over there, taking care of those issues, and that's going to be a cost to the city. So the bottom line is, this project was approved as a gated community- So the bottom line is, this project was approved as a gated community. In good faith, the developers spent a tremendous amount of capital creating an amazing project that we're gonna be very, very proud to have in our city. This project's gonna deliver significant property tax revenue to our city. So I'm hoping you're gonna follow the staff recommendations and approve this project the way it was originally approved as a gated community. Thank you very much.
Question?
Yes, Jane.
You stated that the project was originally approved as a gated community. I don't believe it was.
I can respond to that if you'd like.
Someone verify that?
Yeah, the project was not approved as a gated community.
To begin with.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I'll stand corrected.
Thank you, Mr. Frost. Lyman, Gandy, did I get that right? And followed by Tony Atresia, I'm trying.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilman. Basically, I'm here because I worked with Steve on the initial setup of all the drawings inside, to make sure that it hit all the metro requirements, and it did. Obviously, they approved the plans, they stamped it, and everything else that went along as it relates to the functionality of the gates. There's a few things that come up that I'd like to answer later, after Steve mentions what he has to mention, then I'll kinda put it all together. One, I might add, the emergency vehicles getting in, that seems to be a concern. The fire truck, when it's going down the road, and it's gonna go in there, all it does is push its radio, the gates open, and the gates, nine times out of 10, will be open even before they get there. So that should ever be a concern of the fire trucks getting in or the police. There's a little thing on the gates called Click to Enter, and all you do is click your microphone, the gate opens. Then there's a backup, just in case that doesn't work. And I talked to the president of Click to Enter about East Coast just this week, and I asked him, "How many failures have you had throughout the United States of Click to Enter?" It's less than 2%. And those 2% were all corrected because they weren't installed correctly in the first place and et cetera. So it's almost a bulletproof system. But if that should go down, they have what they call a Knox key switch, where the fire truck has to stop, get out, put his key in it, move it, the gates go in, and they drive in. So I got a few more minutes later, can I do that?
No, this is your time, sir.
This is my time?
It's your time.
I might, I have a question. It says discourage. What does discourage mean in the 4.3? What's the interpretation of discourage? I don't think it says, "No, you can't do it," is it? Not in my estimation. Anyone know that?
But that'd have to be rhetorical, I think. We're not here to answer questions, it's your time to speak.
Okay.
I'll take that as a rhetorical question.
Well, that was just a question I had, I guess, you know. I think that's about all I have to say, really, unless Steve asks me for a question when he's up here, if it's all right. Thank you.
Now, what happens in the case of a power failure with the gate? Do they just cut the, is it a chain-driven gate, where they just cut the chain?
Yes. No, it's not a chain, it's a swing gate.
Oh, it's a swing gate.
Yeah.
They just attach the truck, pull it open.
Yeah. If the power goes out, the gate automatically opens up.
Okay, so it's fail-open.
Yes.
Got it.
And then, if the power goes on, it automatically resets itself and closes. The lock gates have maglocks on them, same thing, they release themselves, and then they go back to work after the power comes back on.
Great, thank you, that was helpful.
Thank you.
Last speaker is Tony, you're gonna have to help me with your last name. Atresia?
Atresia.
I'm getting close. Give me enough time, and...
Old Sicilian name, and we still want our independence from Italy.
Very good.
Anyway.
That's a whole 'nother hearing.
Good evening, members of the council and mayor. I came to the planning commission meeting and spoke about a couple of issues having to do with these gates. One is, one of the concerns that was brought up at the time was, when the parents come to pick up their children from the school, and the way they park up and down the street, it doesn't get near these gates. They don't want their little darlings to have to walk that far. They park in front of my house, which is right next to the school. In fact, the school wraps around my house, and I get out occasionally and tell them, "You can park anywhere you want," instead of, except from in front of my driveway, okay? But they're very good, actually, and they park up the side streets across the way and so on and walk in to get their children. So that's really not an issue. The issue, the two things that bother me is, again, was something that was brought up at the first speaker. If 4.3 says, is opposed to gates and walls, then why was this development encouraged to and made to put walls? The walls are there, so you've got that issue already taken care of. The other thing with the walls and the security from this homeless issue we talked about, several have talked about, the homeless have climbed over the original construction chain-link fences and have been in and out of that property and defaced it and so on and so forth already during the times of construction. It might I make a side comment, I was totally opposed to the original developer that wanted to do this job, but I am totally in supportive of what this job is going on now. But to give you an idea of this homeless issue, two doors down from us, close to the park, right next to the development, was a neighbor who actually, we never, we didn't notice it for a long, long time, had his washer and dryer set up on his back porch. And we discovered that the homeless were climbing over his fence to do their laundry in his washer and dryer. So this is, I mean, we all understand it's a homeless issue, and we try to deal with it in the best and loving way we can. But the fact that destruction and defacement and so on is a problem. And the other issues, the security of the people that live in that development is paramount, in my mind, and as a neighbor, I don't see anything that has to do with keeping them blocked out of our community or not being involved in our community. Citrus Heights has too many community events that are gonna draw people into the city anyway. Even this boot thing that's coming up here with the fire department, that gets people involved. So I don't see any detriment for it, and I'm 100% in favor of these gates. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the speaker sheets I have. So I'm gonna return to Mr. Cassinelli.
Well, all the people that stood and all the people that helped me get down to my seven minutes, I hope, so bear with me. Good evening, council members and mayor. I'm Steve Cassinelli, the developer builder of the project. I left town before Christmas thinking we had an improved project, came back after Christmas to a disappointing appeal. Understand what it is, understand Mr. Van Duker's appeal and his passion for the appeal, and I'd like to respond to some of the issues he's brought up. 4.3 seems to be the issue, which states, "Discourage features of residential development that tend to isolate residents from the sense of integrated community, just as walls and gates in single-family developments." Discourage is to advise, to persuade, to refrain, try to prevent, not to deny, not to stop, and not to prohibit. Violate means to break a law, a rule, a promise, a wrongdoing. We didn't violate anything, nor are we violating anything. A policy is a principle, an interpretation of a plan or a course of action, and you do not violate a policy. You can violate a rule, you can violate a law. And the way 4.3 is written, I thought was very comprehensive and gave the latitude to the council to go either way on a project. You can't make a blanket statement for everything's gonna fit everything. No projects are all gonna be the same. They're gonna have certain unique situations, unique to themselves, as we have. There was no mandatory restrictions anywhere in policy 4.3. So with that being said, Mr. Van Duker's comment that is feally flawed, again, as pointed out earlier, if you look at Exhibits 1 and 1A on your, that I've provided, you'll see that there's approximately 2,000 feet or better of masonry walls, and as was indicated earlier, at a cost of over $600,000. You'll see that there's another 1,100 square feet of iron, it costs a lot of money as well. The combination of fencing, gates, and everything is 99% of the entire site. The only portion that doesn't have a gate on it is the 40-foot entrance that I'm requesting. So where's the consistency, the ambiguity? I believe the fathers who wrote that provision gives the word discourage your latitude to make that discretionary choice. I feel it's unfair for an authority to mandate that we have to do certain things and then use that same mandate that we can't use the same materials to finish up what we'd like to do. That's a little tough. Mr. Van Duker goes on and points out that the school and Citrus Heights Police Department are in favor of the gates, but I didn't provide any supporting documentation. Please refer to my Exhibit Number 2 from Lieutenant David Gutierrez stating that Citrus Heights Police Department supports use of controlled access, and that Citrus Heights Police Department believes that controlled access can deter and make communities safer. That's what I stated in my, tried to bring out in my December 13th presentation, but I didn't have it in writing. Secondly, Exhibit Number 3 from Frank Camadra, from the Senior Director of Facilities Maintenance and Transportation from San Juan Unified School District, confirming my December 13th testimony and also supporting the Citrus Heights Police Department that the controlled access can deter crime and make communities safer. Mr. Van Duker points out that we only had five speakers on a petition, or excuse me, five signed petition neighbors on our signed petition list. Well, that's because it was a last-minute thing, I just thought it would help Mr. Legura make the point that our neighbors that deal with the situation of the park had their support. Since which time, and since the appeal, I've had an opportunity to meet with the Birch Cage Heights Neighborhood Association Area 11 Board, the members, several meetings and tours, and it's been a real pleasure to have their support, and I appreciate that. As pointed out, Mr. Van Duker lives approximately two to three miles from our project. He doesn't understand or deal with the day-to-day problems that we incur from the park and the individuals that live there, reside there, travel through there. There are drug deals going down, there are problems, there's, to name a few, it's disgusting. When we first took over the project, we had homeless camps behind Mr. Stark's property right immediately next door. I personally, in addition to my crew, my contracting crew, cleaned up needles, drug paraphernalia, human feces, you name it, we cleaned it up, it was disgusting. That's gone, and we don't want it back in that project. That's the only way to fight it, is to eliminate it, and we've made a two-year run of trying to do just that. If you refer to Exhibit Number 5, Mr. Van Duker referred to the crime and safety. Crime and safety is not going down. I beg to differ. Exhibit 5 shows the crime and safety. Crime is on a move, and it compares it to other neighborhoods in our area. Police Department's doing a fine job, they're there anytime you need them, every time you call them, but without the gates, they're gonna be called a lot more times in that area because of the homeless situation. This is what I think gets to the crux of the whole issue tonight. I'm fighting for the safety of my future residents. Mr. Van Duker's fighting for the following. He states that the findings are flawed from the planning commission, and he wants you to overturn the planning commission's decisions, so that our project does not set a precedent for other gated communities throughout Citrus Heights. If this decision is allowed to stand, there is absolutely no basis for denying future applications of gated communities. The idea of putting the priority of personal safety behind the desire and the ability to deny future applications for privacy gates is astounding without merit. We have a real, real problem with the park. To hold our project hostage for the ability to deny future requests for privacy gates is an egregious attempt to manipulate the interpretation of Policy 4.3. The language contained in 4.3 gives the planning commission total latitude to be fair and equitable based on the merits of each individual project that comes before you. That was proven by the details presented within the staff report and analysis, excuse me, provided by Mr. Legura, which stated that the direct... Am I over?
You got 11 seconds, Bill's on his time.
Okay. Anyway, I thought I got through most of it. Exhibit 6, if you will, is the Metro Fire Department's approved gate design and plans dated September 12th, 2017, five months ago. The City Planning Division reports staff dated December 13th recommended approval. The planning commission approved our design on December 13th. Citrus Heights Police Department endorses and supports our project, as does the San Juan Unified School District. The school has fences and gates. The park has lock gates. We ask for lock gates, too. We have vested a lot of interest in the project, a lot of time, money, and everything, and in the neighborhood. Therefore, we ask the City Council for your support to deny the appeal and to support and affirm the approval of the design review permit modification. Thank you. Can I answer any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. And Bill, did you have any quick wrap-up?
Is he okay? Thank you, Steve. First of all, I live three houses from Temple Park, so I am not unaware of the homeless problem in terms of my own family residence. I deal with the homeless problem on a daily basis at my business, including cleaning up all kinds of messes that have already been described, and also including used syringes. And I also was one of the fathers that put the 4.3 provision in place since I was chair of the Citizens Committee on the General Plan when the city was first formed. The basic issue is the findings, in my view, are inadequate. If you can find that the findings are adequate to set aside this 4.3, then you should deny my appeal. If you find that the findings are not adequate, then you should support my appeal. And I'll give my remaining two minutes to Mr. Castellini.
Okay. Steve, is there anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, I do. Italian guys want the last message. I share the same passion for Citrus Heights that Mr. Van Duker does. I really and truly do. I appreciate and applaud his passion to support and fight for what he thinks is right. But times change, everything changes, there's exceptions to everything. We need those privacy gates to help our project, and for me to sell it and for my people to feel comfortable, that's my point. I thank him for his challenge, and I thank you for your time. Good evening.
Thank you to all parties. Very well presented. Council comments, Mr. Fox. Oh, I need to close the public hearing now first. Thank you. A little technicality, Mr. Fox.
A quagmire at best, a reality, though, a real reality check forces a community. Times have changed in 20 years, more ways than what we would like to think, particularly with actions that have been taken beyond our control as a community, by the state, by the release of individuals who are now on our streets all the time. More folks to commit crimes, more folks that are homeless, more folks that are living in a place and time where they take advantage of those of us that try to live in our homes, keep our homes up, and live safely. I will, I will say that I have seen this project twice during its construction part to this point. The question of whether or not we can approve or not approve based upon what our codes and regulations say is always the pleasure of the City Council when we start looking at the way things are changed and the way things that are brought to us based upon current events, activities, and needs of our community. Our community is taking a big boost from the people that I met because we are progressively moving forward. We are now getting new housing projects, we are now starting to try to make our community attractive to folks moving in here. We have a very large apartment house groupings with fair rental rates. We have homes being built in the open areas of our community that may not all We have homes being built in the open areas of our community that may not all be gated communities, but are upgrades to the housing inventory that we have. And as I look at these things, I look at what we're presented when we go to meetings and we talk to the people we want to invest in our community, and that, in my mind, drives a whole lot of my thought process. I do not believe that we are absolutely denied the opportunity to have a gated community. I agree that it should be dissuaded. I live in a community that, on one side, I would love for it to be gated, but on the other side, no, not really. We have far too many cars that drive in our neighborhood speeding at a high rate of speed into our cul-de-sacs, higher than what we should have, and yet, we still have a safe part of that community there. And so I see both sides of it. To gate where I live would be a distraction, would be more of a cumbersome because of the way the development is designed and where the gates would have to be placed. Looking at this project, the gates are set back, there's a safety factor in the approaching cars, the departing cars, there's clear views. I don't see a safety hazard in the entrances and the exits from that project. Being a closed project with its streets, I think the planning commission was correct in their assessment that it is very attractive as a closed street project without a number of entrances and exits to other public streets that would be hampered by the closing of the community with the gates. So, all being said, I think that the gates provide an appreciable measure of safety and security to the residents who will live there. I think it speaks to what maybe our community needs to be seen as because we are inclusive of all of our neighborhoods. I have been to neighborhoods with our police department officers and ride-alongs. I've seen the activities in our neighborhood. I get invited to some of the other neighborhoods when they have their little quarterly barbecues that bring their people together. Those activities are open, and everyone is there, and so I don't think we close our neighborhoods off. That being said, I have to say that I truly respect Bill and his point of view, and I've said it, I'll have to admit it, I've called him the father and mentor of my mentality when I was on the planning commission. I appreciate all that he has done and all of his knowledge and support for this community. That being said, though, I think that at this point in time with this particular project, and not saying that this is, should be, an open statement, at least for me, for everybody who wants to look at building another project, that in this case, at this point, and at this time, the gates for that particular area, I believe, would be appropriate, and I would support denying the appeal and approving the decision of the planning commission.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Mr. Daniels.
Thank you, sir. I'll start out by saying that I do want to thank the godfather, Mr. Van Duker, for coming. I think he's here for honorable reasons. I don't think it's necessarily relevant as to where he lives in proximity of the development. I think in his heart, he has every intention of doing what he feels is right for Citrus Heights, as he always has. I love his passion, and we have butted heads in the past on things, but I respect him tremendously. I wish more people could have his passion and show up and voice their opinions. That being said, I want to go over a couple of few things in no particular order about the issue that I think are important, starting with, I think, maybe the biggest one, but the word discourage. I think it's purposely ambiguous. I think it's written so that we have the ability to determine whether or not it's a good idea or not. We're going to discourage them, so hopefully they're not all over the place, but it doesn't say prevent or shall not or anything like that close. It says discourage. Walls and gates, I tell you what, if somebody brought an appeal to me about the walls, I would have supported that. I can't stand walls like that. I just, the wall on Antelope and that development near the freeway, I think, looks horrible when we keep building our little subdivisions around the community and we face people backwards away from the streets and build their backyards so that the walls are along the roadways. Looks horrible to me. So, I think the walls might have been an issue. I don't see the gate as an issue in regards to any kind of aesthetic or problem like that. I think it's very important, though it isn't critical, but it's very important that the Neighborhood Association has come out in support of the gates for this subdivision. We ask our neighbors to get involved in neighborhood associations. They do, and when they bring their opinion here, we should listen to that. That's very important. It doesn't necessarily make the decision, but for me, and I know, I think for all the council members, it carries a lot of weight. It really does. The planning commission, we also should be listening to the planning commission. We've asked them to do something very important, and they have, they've come together, it's a very close vote, it doesn't get any closer, but they gave it the thumbs up. And again, that's what we asked them to do, to be very involved, extremely involved, and to make a decision, and they did, and they approved it. I think the school actually does play a role here because every elementary school we have in this city has a car-stacking problem when it's time for kids to get out of school, and the craziness that parents do to pick up their kids is off the chart. I think if this didn't have a gate, what we would see is way too many parents going into this subdivision, staging their car, and telling little Johnny to walk down the street so they don't have to deal with some of that craziness, or maybe save a minute or whatever. So I think the school actually does play a role in it. And then I think, to conclude, Mr. Frost made a very good point when he brought up the fact that these are private streets. The folks that live there will bear that burden, and they may regret it one day, but they will bear that burden. So for me, this is a private property rights issue, and I believe they have the right to do what they want to do, and if they want to gate their community, they have the right to do that, in my eyes, and so that will be my position on it.
Thank you, Brett. Mr. Slowey.
Thank you, Mayor. So, like Mr. Van Duker said earlier, he was on the Citizens Committee that formed the general plan. I was actually the chairman of the planning commission when this original general plan came through. And then in 2007, I was mayor when the original project came through, although at the time it was under Six Hills Development. Obviously, a little different, I think they originally came through at 62 homes, we approved it at 47. Great news that, you know, 11 years later, the neighborhood was in support of it, because I have to tell you, back in 2007, I don't think most of the neighborhood was in support of this development. Again, probably because of the number, more so than anything else, but, you know, Brett hit it right on top of the head. The word discourage does not mean prevent. It means, you know, discourage. In this case, there's a reason that some of those walls were required, and that has to do with code and open space in schools. I mean, that is what we require, and we want to, you know, if you think about it, you don't want your backyard open up to a school where kids can wander in and out. Obviously, the materials, you know, we could disagree on the height of the materials, but the code does require walls on certain types of developments, so that's why some of that's there. You know, what makes it tough, Bill's a friend of mine, I'm in Rotary, I mean, heck, his son lives next door to me, so I have to see his son tomorrow, no matter what I decide here. So, but at the end of the day, you know, the Neighborhood Association doesn't have a problem with it. I don't think this is going to set a precedent for the very simple reason that in order to have a gated community, you have to have private roads. Well, economics pretty much say that, you know, unless you're going to have at minimum 25 or 30 units, it doesn't make sense to have private streets. We don't have that space in the city to, you know, that those places can be developed, so I really don't think, regardless of what we do here, it's going to be a precedent setting. I don't actually, in this particular instance, have an issue with the gate. I mean, I know it wasn't approved with it, they didn't ask for it, again, different company back then and 11 years ago. I remember this particular topic when it came up 20 years ago, and again, discouraged isn't violation to allow it, it's just, you know, try to do what you can, but every situation's different. So personally, Bill, I get you, I appreciate the fact that you're a stickler for detail and policy, but in this case, I don't think we're violating the policy by allowing it. I don't think the planning commission does, did. One follow-up question, Colleen. What, and my ignorance for not knowing this, but what do we charge today to file an appeal? What did Bill have to pay? $250?
Yes.
Okay. So, my recommendation is, once we go through this, whether we approve it or deny it, I don't, doesn't, you know, that's what it's going to be, but knowing Bill's passion, I would personally ask to the council to consider giving Bill his $250 back.
But that's going to create a precedence.
That's okay. I'm willing...
It is a precedence, that's what we usually do.
I'm willing to live with that.
We'll discourage...
We'll let any bill in the future ask us that question.
There you go. Thank you, Jeff. Ms. Bruins.
Thank you. Well, several thoughts. One is that when this project came before us back in '07, was it, Jeff? I have supported it then, and it was not a popular project with the neighborhoods at that time, but I really felt it was a good project, and then it didn't happen. We all know the reasons why. The other thing I want to just bring to the forefront is, the planning commission did pass this, but it was a four-to-three vote, and if the vote had been one vote the other way, then Mr. Castanelli would be bringing the appeal to us today, not a private citizen. So it wasn't a unanimous vote by any means. The other thing I'd like to just address are the crime statistics that were given to us. You know, statistics can say pretty much whatever you want them to say. We're being compared by, to other cities around the United States and around the state of California, but in order for crime statistics to really be relevant, you need to compare like communities with like communities. And in that situation, I think Citrus Heights would shine because we have brought crime down over the years, and since these statistics from this website were published, you know, I had a brief conversation with a chief, and crime went down, violent crimes went down 11% between 2016 and 2017 in Citrus Heights. So, I understand crime statistics, but I do take them with a grain of salt when they're published on a website. Some of the points I was going to make have been made. My concern, in general, I really do not favor gated communities. I have one very close to where I live, on Old Auburn Road, and I happen to know one family there because we go to, we went to church, same church for a period of time. Other than that, I've never met these people because they never come out. So I think there is some argument for gated community residents to just stick within themselves. So it would be incumbent, I believe, on the people that live around them, you know, to reach out to them if you want to engage them in your Neighborhood Association meetings and things of that nature. The problem I have is that 4.3 is not conclusive. It does say discourage, and I really think that we have to take a look at this particular item in our general plan, because what do we mean by discourage? I don't know what that means. Does that happen on the staff level where they say no three times and then they say yes? I don't know what being discouraged means if I were to bring a project before the city. It's either usually a yes or a no, and so, even though, in general, I do not support gated communities, I do think that tends to balkanize the people that live in them. I don't think I have the stance to be able to deny this project, and since 90% of the project is already encompassed by a wall and a fence, adding a gate, I don't think is going to have that big of an impact. So I will also support the project, or deny the request and support the project.
Okay. Well, I can read the tea leaves, so I'll be real quick with my comments as well. I will say that both parties made very compelling arguments, and I appreciate it, and thank you for your time, and after I read this item, I was on the fence, but I do find that discourage versus require is, I understand require, discourage, I'm not so sure, and Colleen and I had talked earlier this, today, and the developer, I understand, was discouraged from putting the gate in, and I have to hand it to you, you did the right thing by going to the neighborhood, because I think that's the tipping point for me, is to have a neighborhood that was just so against this project turn around and see the letters of support. You've got to be doing something right out there, and I know you invited me to see the property, Mr. Castanelli, and I declined till after this is over, and I'll be glad to come out once we vote. And so, yeah, key to me is safety and security, and I think 4.3 gives us a little wiggle room, so I'll be supporting the denial, and I'd like to take a motion now, if it pleases the council.
I will move the motion one, finding that the previously adopted mitigate neck deck for the project is appropriate and that no substantial changes have occurred, or yada, 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 whatever, that's right there.
Was that a motion for the entire...
Nope, just motion one.
Just motion one?
Okay, so we'll vote on motion one?
I think we need to...
Would you like a second?
Oh, yeah, I do need a second, huh? Not a second motion, a second to the motion. Got it, now we're official when you can vote. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I would make... Motion carries. A second motion, that we deny the appeal and prove a design review permit modifying, modification allowing privacy gates to be installed 5555 Mariposa, subject to the findings and the condition of the approval, and a new item to refund Mr. Van Duker's $350.
Approve, excuse me, second.
There's motion second, alls in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Both motions carry, so the appeal's denied. Again, thank you all for your time and comments.
The next item, regular calendar 13, has already been continued by an earlier motion. Next item is Department Reports, number 14, and the subject is update on changes to the 916 area code by the police department.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Sandy Moravio. I'm the Support Services Manager for the Citrus Heights Police Department, and I'm here tonight just to remind the community of the upcoming changes to the new area code and phone dialing changes that are going to occur effective on Saturday. So, effective the 10th, our landline phones and cell phones will be required to call all regional phone numbers in the Sacramento and Placer County areas, regardless of the same area code, using the same 10, the full 10-digit dialing. This is due to the fact that we are introducing a new area code on March 10th, and between the two area codes, will be required to do the 10-digit dialing for both of them. So, if you're in a 916 area code, you need to dial 1-916 and the phone number. And then, as I stated, on March 10th, the region will begin assigning a new area code to new phones. They're not going to be changing anybody's phone numbers with the area codes, they're just going to be assigning here forward the 279 area code, again, to Sacramento and Placer areas, and at that point, you'll also have to dial the 10-digit phone numbers for the region. So you have a little bit of work to do between now and Saturday if you haven't done it already. And lastly, there will not be any long-distance charges when you're dialing it, that's just going to be the new dialing requirement. So what do you need to do between now and Saturday? If you haven't done it already, you need to start working on your email and your Outlook, if you have Outlook or other contacts that you have in your personal life, and then at work, you're going to need to introduce the new 1-916 or 1-279 to your cell phones, so you'll have to go in and do some reprogramming on your cell phones. And then, of course, at work, and in our community, for the community members out there, we want to make sure that they also know that they need to do that. This does not affect dialing 911. We can see there could be an effect on people practicing dialing this new area code with the new one, so there might be a little bit of effect on dispatch, but they'll be fine managing that. If you have fax lines at home, or if you have fax lines at work, you need to go, and most of us have things preprogrammed in them, the phone numbers, you need to go in and add the 1 and the area code, so 1-916. If you have an alarm system, whether police or fire, alarm systems that go into an alarm company, you want to make sure that those are programmed accordingly also with the 1 and the area code. And lastly, you can ask your phone vendor, because some of them might be upgrading the phones to include the 1, and then you just have to have the area code in there, but I cannot speak for them. I want to make sure that, if that's a question that you have, that you contact them directly. And then, lastly, when in doubt, dial it out. That's the campaign that's been on TV for the last month, so we want to make sure that our community is taking this seriously so they're not having to scramble at the last minute. So we have two days for this update. So, we have two days for this update. That's all I have. Any questions?
I do, and I don't know if you're going to be able to answer it, but, you know, obviously, telephone number seven, area code's three, so 10 digits. I, you know, I have all sorts of area codes and numbers programmed into my phone, and cell phones, it's my understanding, are smart enough to recognize that if you have an area code plus a number, you don't have to dial the 1. Different than a landline.
That is true, but it depends on the cell provider, too, and the upgrade. So, that's why they're encouraging people to call and make sure. I'm going to assume that quite a bit of updates will come out onto cell phones on Saturday and probably make those changes automatically, but we would want the community to make sure that that's the case and check with your provider.
Yeah, I was just going to say, make sure you check with your provider. Because I actually tried to program the 1 in, and it wouldn't take it yet.
See, we're thinking Saturday is going to make quite a bit of a difference.
So, but my landline, I do have to dial the 1 for an area code, so, you know, just look at what you're doing, and like you said, if in doubt, dial it out.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Any other questions? Thank you, Sandy.
You're welcome. Have a great evening.
Will do.
I can't wait to look at this, to be 14 numbers.
So, with that, the next item is City Manager Items, and there are none. Next is Items Requested by Council Members or Any Future Agenda Items.
Any requests here, Jeanne?
I just want to make a comment and ask for input on this, given what we just went through with this appeal. And the item 4.2, section 4, or item 4.3 in the general plan, it seems to me that it's time to take a look at our general plan, and particularly some of the ambiguities that may be in there. What are our plans in that regard? Rhonda.
I noticed a couple of things. It still talks about redevelopment in our general plan.
Yep. To address your comment, Rhonda Sherman, the Community Services Director. In terms of administrative changes, those are easy to make, and we can make four changes per year, and we can go in there and make some of those administrative changes. We do have in the next, coming up in the next couple of years, some changes that'll be related probably to our housing element and to some transportation-related items that we do need to address. In terms of a wholesale relook at our general plan, that's something that we, the council, would have to decide, and typically what happens is if you have come across that you need to amend your general plan on a regular basis due to issues like this that come up, it's probably time to relook at it. One time in the recent history is probably not, you know, enough that you'd want to take a wholesale relook at the general plan, but it's certainly up to the council. We can put a little bit more information together if you're interested.
So, how long, typically, within the city, since we're only 20 years old, how long does a general plan's life extend before they do a wholesale change?
Well, I think it, I think the state would probably say, you know, it's, you know, every 10 to 20 years. We did do a major update a few years ago, and so that was pretty significant. It really depends, though, on, again, the changing values of a community.
Okay. All right. And ours are probably, the need as far as growth and so forth in different kinds of communities is probably less than other communities since we're so built out already, and our footprint isn't going to change that much, if you will.
That's true, and if you feel generally your land use, you know, policies are in line with your, with the council's preferences and the community's preferences, it's probably not time to do a wholesale change. Again, we do have some major things that are coming up in the next couple of years.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that good enough for now? Anything else? Next item? Then we are adjourned.